...to order, the Senate will please come to order. Further resolutions?
No, sir.
Motions, petitions?
There are none.
Unfinished business? Junior Senator from the Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question and answer is consent that we move back to the fourth order of business.
Is there objection? Chair here is none, so ordered. Reports from standing committees.
Your Committee on Education has had under consideration Senate Bill 451 originating in committee relating to comprehensive education reform, and reports the same back with the recommendation that it do pass, but with the further recommendation that it first be referred to the Committee on Finance. Respectfully submitted, Patricia Puertes Rucker.
Report will be received. Junior Senator from the Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question and answer is consent that Senate Bill 451 be referred to the committee as a whole.
Is there objection? Question has been noted. Junior Senator from the Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that bill be referred to the committee as a whole.
Junior Senator from the Seventeenth moves that Senate Bill Number 451 be referred to Committee on the whole. Is there discussion? No. Junior's, or the Senator from Marion County?
Point of inquiry.
Senator may state his point.
Since this bill has a number to it, 451, as was taken up in the Committee on Education, there was a motion that it be referred to a second committee reference of Finance. Now, we're going around the Finance Committee and bringing it directly to the floor?
If the Senator's inquiry is, is the motion in order, the motion is in order to do so.
I'm not questioning the motion. This is point of information.
Well, there is a motion on the floor that would put the entire Senate into a committee of whole such that everyone would be exposed to all aspects of the Senate Bill 451.
Would the Majority Leader yield for a question, please?
Senator yields. Senator does yield.
Senator, from what I understand, the bill is referred to the Second Committee reference on Finance. And now, we're going to circumvent the committee system and bring it down here as a committee of the whole, which means that the entire body will be the Education and Finance Committee?
That's correct. The thought process is that the bill is, has many, many, many parts, and so it is important that the entire body look at this. It's going to affect each and every one of our districts. And so, the thought was, it would be best to bring it down and let the committee run this as a whole body, since it is such a large bill.
You know, I've been here thirty years. I've never experienced a motion of this sort before. You know, it seems to me that our committee system is working. Would you agree with me that the Education Committee sets up the policy for this particular piece of legislation? You know, it's an education bill. The Education Committee has it. They developed the policy?
Well, I would, but also feel that the Education Committee reviewed this bill, passed the bill, and now it's more of a Finance issue. And so, we're still waiting on fiscal notes. I don't think this bill can be taken up until we receive those fiscal notes. I like to see them myself.
Well, just because we don't have a fiscal note, we're not going to send it to Finance?
Well, Finance would be looking at the fiscal implication of the bill, but the education component of the bill was passed through Education Committee. So, again, the body as a whole, this gives everyone an opportunity, because, as you know, the purpose of the committees are to vet whether or not these bills are good ideas or bad ideas. And so, this one is such a large bill, has so many pieces, the feeling is that it's important that all Senators be part of that discussion when this thing is vetted through the body as a whole versus a single committee.
Do you feel that the bill was well-vetted in the Education Committee?
Well, I'd have to put my faith in the Education Committee. I'm not on the Education Committee, so I didn't...
So, you're concerned that the Education Committee didn't do its job?
I would hope that it did its job, yes, sir.
Well, if they did its job, then why wasn't it referred to the Finance Committee to do their job, which is to look at the fiscal implications of this bill and act accordingly? Isn't that the responsibility of the Finance Committee?
That is part of the responsibility of the Finance Committee, but then ultimately, it is the responsibility of the body as a whole to hear all of the pluses and minuses and the fiscal implications of the bill. And so, when you're talking bills that have to do with certain value or amounts, but when you're talking of bills with a potential fiscal implication as large as this one, I do not see that it's unreasonable that all members get to hear the discussions. The issue with the committee process, and I think it's a good process, but is that only those members on those committees oftentimes get to hear those discussions? And then, we on the floor have to stand up and try to reiterate best of our recollection what those discussions were. This gives the whole body part of, to allow them to be part of that discussion.
Have you ever seen this procedure done before?
I haven't.
And you agree with that this is the right way to go? I mean, taking into consideration, this legislative body is founded upon the committee systems to be able to do their work, but now we're going to circumvent the committee system? I mean, what is the leadership afraid of?
Well, I don't think we're afraid of anything. I think what we're trying to do here is give everybody ample opportunity to discuss with the people presenting their questions. So, instead of just the members on the Finance Committee, let the body as a whole, all these bills, no bill belongs to any committee. The bill belongs to the body as a whole. So, this gives us the chance to vet this together as a, hopefully, unifying body to say this is a good idea or a bad idea.
But I don't understand what's changed. I mean, the committee system works to vet the particular issues addressed to a certain bill, and then the bill comes down to the full body, and every member has a chance to ask questions, to participate in the process. Eventually, the whole committee's going to hear it anyway. I mean, we're just circumventing now the committee system. I don't, you're not giving me a good reason why we're doing this.
Well, the reason is because when it's in Finance Committee, only those members in Finance Committee can ask the experts. That's their one time when they can bring them up and ask them specifics. Once it comes up to the body, amendments can be made, but we don't have, we've lost that opportunity to bring those people up, interview them, ask them specific questions. And so, half of the body will be absent from those discussions. Some may have been in Education, but some of the questions, they may have felt that the educational component was satisfied, but the financial component, they may have additional questions. So, this gives everybody an ample opportunity to interview any expert coming up regarding the positives and negatives of the bill.
So, we're going to open up the floor to the entire committee system, which will mean that people will be allowed to testify on the floor, just as we do in the committee system?
That's correct.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to speak...
Did Senator wish to speak to the motion?
I'd like to speak to this. You know, I've been here thirty years. I've never seen this done before. Why don't we just close down the entire committee system, which is the foundation of this body, is our committee system, and bring every bill down here, and let's just run every bill from the floor? And, you know, we'll save a lot of time. You know, we heard Senator from Nicholas today in his prayer. He prayed that for the committee work, as the committees work, to get the job done, to benefit the citizens of West Virginia, you know, we prayed for that. That's the basis, the foundation of this legislative body as a committee system. You work more intimately on the issues to address each bill that comes before us. The committee chair has the responsibility of taking up, you know, a piece of legislation or not taking it up. That's the way the process works. You know, it seems to me that the leadership here is afraid the committee system is not working. They don't have confidence in the Finance Committee. Well, I can attest, our Finance Chair has given us every consideration to ask questions, to bring people before the Finance Committee, to have a more intimate relationship, to narrow down, to dig down into the crux of the problems. I just can't see, or this spectacle that we're creating here on the floor just doesn't make sense. I would hope that for the integrity of this body and this legislature, if you have any sense of responsibility, that you'll vote this motion down. This is egregious. This is something that I've never seen before. I'd have to go back to the archives to find the last time this was ever done. I can't even imagine a legislative body doing this. We've had considerable bills larger than this omnibus education bill, and we're eliminating the committee, the integrity of the committee structure to do this. I plead you to vote no. Stand up for the integrity of this Senate. Be a responsible Senator and do the right thing.
Further members desiring to speak to the motion? Senator from Brook County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I heard my friend from Marion talk about what leadership is afraid of here, and as your whip, I'm a member of the leadership team. And I have to say that I am afraid of something, and what I'm afraid of is not being informed enough on this piece of legislation. In addition to being the whip, I'm also the Vice Chair of Judiciary. That means I'm not on the Finance Committee. I'm also not on the Education Committee. And so, by the process that we are doing now, which gives absolute full and complete transparency to this, because it brings the committee system here with the attorneys speaking to the bill, with experts from both sides being in and being able to speak to the bill, that gives me the opportunity, as someone who is not a member of either one of those committees, the opportunity to hear everything about this bill before we then have to vote on it. And this past weekend, I was doing a little research, and I can't find a time when this body has done something that's been so sweeping and tried to be this transformative about what we're doing in this state. And so, this system, the Majority Leader is proposing here is a committee. It's a committee of thirty-four. It's not a committee of seventeen. It's not a committee of twelve. And I think it really gives us all the opportunity to have that shared responsibility, to be able to look at a piece of legislation, not just members who are on those committees. And so, that's my reason for supporting this, is that I get to look at it before we vote at it, because we're not voting on it during the committee as a whole. That whole process is still the same. Nothing is shortened. Nothing is lacking from that system. It's just that we're taking a look at it as the committee as a whole, and that gives me the opportunity to do so. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion. The Senator from, Junior, or Senior Senator from the Seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Junior Senator from Seventeenth yield?
Senator yields. The Senator does yield.
In preparation for making this motion, did you look and see whether this has been done historically in the Senate? And if so, when the last time it was done?
I have not, but I would have to go by our founding fathers that set up Jeffersonian rules, which I believe is what we go by, and this is a tool in the toolbox that they provided. So, if a body felt that there was a significant piece of legislation that was large enough, important enough, and certainly, the kids in our state are the most important vital thing that we have, that this process can be done, that the Senate as a whole take a look at it as one committee?
So, is it your position that this has never been done in the history of the state, or you just haven't looked at that and don't know whether it has?
I have not looked to see if it's been done in the past.
Did Senator wish to speak to the motion?
Mr. President, I mean, did we, does anyone have that answer? Do we know?
Nineteen sixty-one and nineteen seventeen. It looks like that's been done.
Nineteen sixty-one and nineteen seventeen?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. As I understood, your justification for doing it in this case was the significant financial implications that this was going to have. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
That is part. That's correct.
Okay. I mean, we've had a lot of bills that have had major fiscal impacts before. We've had a significant tax reform bill a couple of years ago that we considered. We've had all kinds of bills that have had major fiscal impacts. Why this one?
I don't think we've had a bill, I don't think we've had a bill that has had this potential impact across just finances, but also education in the state of West Virginia. There is a lot of parts to this thing that I believe is misunderstood. And so, the thought process is bring the body as a whole, vet this body as a whole, so that we can either pass it up or pass it down as a whole.
Do you have any sense for what the fiscal impact is right now?
I'm glad that was your... It will be at ease.
Senator may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, your position is it's got major fiscal impacts, and also, it's very broad and touches a lot of different topics and areas? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Throughout education, yes.
Throughout education. Mr. President, if I could just speak real briefly?
Senator may speak to the motion.
I think the justification that this has broad fiscal implications is ridiculous, quite honestly. I mean, if that's the position we're going to take, I mean, why would we not send every budget to the committee on the whole? I mean, we've never done that before. There's no bill that has broader fiscal implications than the budget bill. We've never done this before. I think the justification for doing that in this case makes very little sense, and I would urge defeat of the motion.
Further members desiring to speak to the motion? Senator from Harrison County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition to the motion, but I want to say I agree with my friend from Canola. This is one of the most significant bills that we've addressed in this body in the five years I've been here. And the way it's been put through the committee process, and now this, with all due respect, makes it an absolute joke. There is still no bill on the system. The Education Committee has never received a final bill. We still don't have a final bill. We've never seen a fiscal note. We've looked at four or five different versions of this bill and still voted out of committee. To bypass the committee now on such an essential piece of legislation, there's just no justification for it. Any more justification than originating it out of the Education Committee itself. It was put together by the Education Chairman and outside national interests that have an interest in creating a charter school system. It's guaranteed to starve an already starving public school system. The Chair of the Finance Committee made the motion to double-reference this, Mr. President. This bypass shows no respect for the committee process. It shows no respect for the people who oppose it, and it shows no respect for the people who want to make that bill better in Finance. Just because we're worried about what the vote's going to be in the Finance Committee is the only reason this was done. Mr. President, I'd ask you and the rest of this body to vote against this amendment or this motion.
Further members desiring to speak to the motion? The Senator, Senior Senator from the Fifteenth.
I would ask the Senator from the Majority Leader to yield.
Junior Senator from Seventeenth yields. Senator does yield.
Senator, let me make sure that how we, how this process is going. So, as a committee as a whole, will the President chair the committee? And will we have the opportunity to, how is that going to go on in the floor? Because I'm not positive that I understand exactly how this process will work.
It's my understanding that the President can designate another member to chair of the body as a whole.
I volunteer.
Okay.
So, I volunteer to do that, Mr. President. Since you're going to do that, I think that's a really good point, and he can select whoever he wants. So, Senator, if you go back and look at it in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen seventeen, what happened, and I was six years old, I will freely admit it, in nineteen sixty-one, and you probably weren't even here. But in nineteen sixty-one, what happened and what did they bring to the board, to the committee here in the Senate? Was that done in the Senate or was it done in the House?
In nineteen sixty-one, apparently, there was a technical complication with the bill, and it was the Senate that met as a whole.
And they just heard a presentation, correct?
There had to be a detailed explanation that staff had to be called in for testimony.
Okay, so that we just, they just heard a presentation. Okay, I'd like to speak to the...
Senator may speak to the motion.
Thank you. Having been here for a few years and seeing exactly the complication of some of the issues we've had, we've always allowed it to go through the committee system. I remember workers' compensation on this floor when it went through Judiciary, came to the floor three separate days. I was not a member of the Judiciary Committee. I was a member of Finance. There were a number of us that were a member of Finance, and we didn't say, I'll bring that bill to the floor, and we let it work through the process. One of the most, you know, drastic bills that we've done, that really other states have used as a precedence for doing, you know, doing similar to us, was medical malpractice reform. When we did that, we not only came in, the bill wasn't acceptable, we came back six weeks later, not costing the taxpayer any money related to that, and still, it went through the same process. So, to me, to bring this as a committee of the whole on the floor is not the process that our forefathers had looked at. It was that you appoint committees, that committee chair handles the bill, and then they move it on to the next one. And this is unconventional in many, many ways. I've been a part of originating bills. I've had very few originating bills pass, but there was usually some reason for an originating bill, not to be able to change it in the process, even though we're going to Finance. So, I think it's, I ask everybody to vote this motion down, and just from the mere fact that we need to allow the process to work. It's early in the session. I'm still trying to figure out the urgency of why we're doing everything so quickly, so secretly, and without a lot of information.
Other members desiring to speak to motion? Senior Senator from the Fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this motion. There's a couple of reasons for it. Number one is, is when I made that motion as the Vice Chair of Education to report it second reference with the recommendation that it be sent to the Finance Committee, I also made another statement up there, and it said, if I had my way about it, I said my way at that point in time, I didn't know this was going to happen, but if I had my way about it, I would have sent it to a committee as a whole, for the very reasons that the Senator behind me, the whip here, stated, he's not on Finance or Education. Senator from Greenbrier agreed with me. After I spoke, the Senator agreed with me. It's a good way of doing it. Just because it hasn't been done since nineteen seventy or nineteen sixty-one, or whenever, if it's within our rules, and it's a tool to have better process for making sure all members are educated, and it's a committee. It is not the Senate having deliberations. There's a big, big difference between it, because as a committee as a whole, thirty-four members, including our Senate President, will be part of the process. There could be PowerPoint presentations. There could be the normal stuff that takes place in each and every one of our committees. And it brings an awareness to each and every one of our members. And the same way for the fiscal, as we're talking about this, you know what? There was several versions of the bill, but it was only because we were trying to be transparent, Mr. President. Didn't need to have anything out in the front on doing this. But we were trying to make it so that everybody knew exactly what was going on, to the best of ability that we had. Now, we're dealing with the fiscal side of it, and it's not limited to that. Make no mistake, up in Finance, we look at the dollars and the fiscal policy, but we also look at the policy of the bill, because many of us are not on the committees that would be second-referenced from. So, we need to have that access. Now, here we are where there'll be thirty-four of us, taking full advantage of a rule that is allowable, and it makes ultimate sense at this point in time for this piece of legislation. To be opposed to it doesn't make sense. That is saying that you have the potential to discard some members, and just because it's always been done a certain way. Well, I would make the argument, Mr. President, that doing things the same way over and over and expecting different results is probably what has gotten us into some of the troubles that we have in this state to begin with. I do believe I said something similar to that up in the Education meeting as well. Look, Mr. President, this is the right path to go. It is the absolute right path to go, because it will streamline the process and make it so that we can be educated, but not just us. The people in West Virginia will be paying attention to this historic event and understanding full well what is going to be in this piece of legislation that I anticipate is going to change education for the better, for the state of West Virginia, for all our people. And I encourage them to look in and see what's going on. This is a much, much better process for this piece of legislation. Doesn't apply at all, but it certainly would work well on this one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other members desiring to speak to the motion? Before I recognize the Senator from Tucker County.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of inquiry, I want to make sure I got my hands wrapped around this. I'm not on Finance or I'm not on Education, and I've been getting all kinds of emails, phone calls, text messages, Facebook, everyone here has. This will be just a regular committee, I mean, run like any other committee with the Chairman and me, but even though I'm not on these two committees, I'll be able to ask questions and get answers and call, if I want to call somebody up, I can call somebody up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, it'll be, it'll be an open process? Okay. Speak to the...
Senator may speak to the motion.
I feel kind of responsible for this. Shouldn't have meant that, I guess, but I came to leadership with concerns of not knowing practically anything about this bill, because I'm not on any committees, and that was my big worry, that I wasn't going to, you know, be able to wrap my hands around it. So, I have to applaud, applaud whoever, you, Mr. President, I guess is your final decision to allow on this, because I have concerns about it, and all of us in here do, I'm sure. And by this being an open, I don't see where it's hiding anything. And no offense, but I can remember in two thousand, it was either, I think it was thirteen, the first year I served, when we ran a bill, I was in the minority then, and several, some of you here was in the majority, but we ran a tax credit bill out for the Greenbrier in two hours, which didn't see any committee, any committee reference, and it was just ramrodded out in both the House and the Senate within two hours, and I had a lot of questions in, and my head was suspended. And so, again, Mr. President, I applaud you for doing this, because, you know, I'm probably the simplest person in this body, more ways than one, and I appreciate this because I do have concerns with this bill, and, you know, I'd like to be able to answer the questions, and now, I can't answer the questions, because I just, I don't have the knowledge, and I just feel this, when this, if we do this as a whole body, where all of us who were, like myself, unable to participate in the process until it gets to the floor, and then by the time it gets to the floor, who do you ask? I mean, we can't call anybody up to ask. We just have to. So, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's in the rules. It's not illegal. It's transparency, because everyone in the state's going to be able to watch it if they want to watch it, and hopefully, I can get my hands wrapped around it. So, with that, I support the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator from Nicholas County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this particular motion. It's a motion that our fathers, our forefathers thought about when they put this particular rule into our parliamentary procedure for our interaction here on the floor of this Senate. I'll echo what the, what the Majority Whip and what the gentleman from Tucker has said. I too set on both Judiciary, and I do not set on Finance, and I do not set in the Committee on Education. My constituents are hammering me right now in social media and in emails, wanting to know what my position is. And all I can do right now is simply say that the bill has been, is in the process of being introduced... of being introduced. I haven't had the opportunity to read the full bill, and therefore I can't render a, an appropriate position on what my position is on any particular aspect encompassed within the bill. I thank you, Majority Leader, for making this motion. I think it's appropriate. I think it's, I think it's prudent. I think it's wise. It allows each of us to be able to ask questions, questions that our constituents are already asking about this particular piece of legislation, so that when it's here in the committee process, as the committee of the whole, separate and apart from our normal session, I can ask questions and have answers that then I can establish an appropriate position and be able to represent to my constituents with full understanding, well-educated, well-vetted, to know exactly how I am speaking on their behalf here at the West Virginia Senate. I support this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator from Greenbrier County is recognized, speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since my name was invoked, I believe uncharitably, I would just like to make a brief response and set the record straight. I made a plea in the Education Committee, probably about 6:30 on Friday night, 30-some hours after I'd first seen this bill, stayed up all night reading it. I hope my colleagues have taken a chance to read it this weekend. My plea was that this bill be vetted fiscally, and it be vetted fiscally by folks in the Education Committee who ought to know the impacts that those words would have on our education policy on our schools throughout West Virginia. So, my plea is that that happens. It should have happened initially, was my point, that if we're going to face a bill with this much impact, that the fiscal note should be available to us in the Education Committee. Now, I understand I'm new to this process, I'm new to this body, perhaps that's not how the way things work here. I think with a bill this important, this comprehensive, it needs to A, be fiscally vetted, and B, it should have been done in the Finance, in the, excuse me, in the Education Committee when this first came before us. Thank you.
Recognize the Junior Senator from 17th to close debate. Junior Senator from 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to remind all members that this motion is simply to bring the bill before the body as a whole, so that it can be vetted, whether you like it or you don't like it, but that each member has the right and the ability to bring people up, to have them testify, to have your specific questions answered, so your constituents that are reaching out to you have their questions answered. Now, as many of the members in here have been receiving many emails, most of these are from, or at least the ones in my inbox have been from teachers from the public school system, I'd like to share something that makes me feel this is a better ideal more than ever. I was absent from the Senate on Friday, because I was selected as about one of, or about one of 22 state legislators across the country who had expertise in the healthcare system regarding opioid addiction. And so, NCSL and the CDC has combined Opioid Fellows Group to try to educate what all states are doing in this horrid epidemic that's affecting every single one of our families. Everybody's touched by the opioid epidemic, and so it was a wonderful meeting that was very bipartisan, that Republicans, Democrats, delegates, senators from across the country came together, shared what their states were doing, shared their experiences, what works, what doesn't work, and hopefully gives everybody action plans to try to take those positives back to our home states and make a difference. And that's the way it should be done. And so, on side notes, when I would be talking to these senators, we would have discussions on multiple other topics, and some very, senators from very Democrat-leaning states I spoke to, one being from Rhode Island, and I asked, I said, you know, they would ask what other things are going on in your state? And I said, well, you know, one of the big things is an education reform bill. I said, let me ask you, do you guys have charter schools in, I believe it was Rhode Island, that's been under Democratic control for 93 years? He goes, yeah, my company's built three of them. They work great. So, you look at states from New York, Massachusetts, California, Washington DC, Hawaii, Delaware, very left-leaning states, and they, they love them. They're in all those states, because they say they work. They definitely build students and populations up. So, my concern then is if this is a bad bill, we need to vet this, but again, I think the only thing that we can do wrong is nothing at all, and all this amendment, or all this motion does is brings it to the body, lets this be truly vetted by the body, let us find out if there is something so different about this bill that is, is different than all the other states, Republican-leaning, Democrat-leaning, that all feel that this has helped their children. I'd like to share one other thing in my closing, Mr. President. Many emails I received and I read over the course of the weekend from teachers, but there was one, one from an actual student. And I just want to read an excerpt from a high school student from Braxton County. It said, "After doing my own research into your Senate's proposed education reform, I would like you to know that I support it in its entirety. Charter schools are a good choice for many children, and I believe that education is very different from everyone, for everyone. Some children are better off homeschooled, some are better off in charter schools, and some are better off in public school systems. I think it's amazing that the Senate recognizes this. The main issue many people have are the public funds will be used to fund charter schools and homeschoolers as well. I see nothing wrong with that. All kids deserve to be educated, so I think the fund should be shared. Why should only public schools be federally and state-funded?" It goes on to have other good points, but my point is, that was from a student, and this bill is for students and improving the education in this state. And for that reason, I ask passage of the motion.
Question for the Senate is, "Dopson, the motion is offered by the Junior Senator from 17th, that Senate Bill 451 be referred to committee on the whole? All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the motion adopted." Unfinished business. The Senator from Cabo County seeks recognition?
Yes, I have a point of order, Mr. President.
Senator may state his point.
Basically, I have three points of order.
Take the first one first.
That's a good idea. I think I'll do that. First of all, our Senate rules are being transgressed, and Mr. Jefferson's rules are being transgressed. So, I am asking, go ahead.
Sorry, in what manner?
Well, first of all, we're violating Article 6 of the West Virginia Constitution, subsection 630. This bill, Senate Bill 451, violates the provision in our West Virginia Constitution, which states, "No act shall contain more than one object." And I want a ruling from the Chair on that. Shall embrace more than one object.
The Senator's point is not within the purview of the Senate or the Legislature to address.
Excuse me?
The Senator's point as to reference to the Constitution is not in the purview of the Senate or the Legislature to address.
I challenge that.
Well, you're.
Would you explain that? Because that's, I've studied Mr. Jefferson's rules, I don't, I mean, where else would I raise it? Go over to the Supreme Court on the other side of the building and raise it? I want, you're in charge of the, I challenge, I challenge the ruling.
The Senator has challenged the ruling of the Chair.
I'd just like to have a ruling. Does it have one, does it have, does it, does the bill embrace one object or multiple objects?
Senator, again, that is not within our purview. That, you can raise the constitutional issue in the proper venue. This is not the proper venue.
I'm raising it under our Senate rules.
I'm ruling under our Senate rules that the point is out of order. Senator may state his next point.
Well, how about challenging the fact that the title insufficiently identifies the different topics in the bill? Do you have authority to rule on that? I'll ask for the ayes and nays.
Again, that is a constitutional issue that must be challenged in the proper venue. And so, again, your point is out of order, but point number three.
I'll ask for the ayes and nays.
Are you challenging the ruling of the Chair? Did the Senator demand the ayes and nays?
Yes, sir.
The demand on ayes, the demand for the ayes and nays sustained? The demand is sustained. All those in favor of sustaining the ruling of the Chair will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk will prepare the machine. Everyone voted? Has every member voted? So, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, there'll be 18 ayes, 15 nays, one absent and not voting, less or more than a majority of those having, present and voting, having voted in the affirmative, the ruling of the Chair is sustained. Does the Senator have another point? Unfinished business.
Senate Concurrent Resolution 16, naming the U.S. Army Specialist 4 Wilbur Allen Smith Memorial